To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on its mission, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and with that, the first thing we will do is the public hearing in accordance with RSA forty-one colon nine dash A to discuss and receive input on the addition to recreation program fees. So this new fee is a swim lesson program at a hundred and forty dollars per enrollee. That seems to be pretty much in line with everything you've researched.
Yes. It seems a little low, actually, but yes.
Low is good. Everybody likes it.
Yeah, that's what we thought, yeah.
How many, I'm sorry, don't have the details. How many weeks is it for?
Seven weeks.
Seven weeks and an hour a week? Forty?
Forty-five.
Forty-five?
Depending on scheduling.
Okay. And are we doing like multiple age groups? Okay, so it's gonna be a day of different things.
It's partially based on age, partially based on experience, so we'll focus on experience first and then try to group by age after that.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Okay, so really it's like twenty... Oh, you're being invited into the meeting.
Sophie, can you step in just so they can hear you?
Hi, sorry, I got two little ones, so. Sophie Edwards, she's the, our swim instructor.
And she was very kind and was certified, American Recor certified, so we appreciate that she did that just for the town of Madison.
Happy to, it's a need around here, so definitely glad to be able to offer it to folks.
Thank you. He's happy too.
I appreciate it. Just gotta get a little bit older.
Any other questions?
Hi, Donna Vellu, when my daughter grew up on Silver Lake, not on the lake, but when she took swim lessons some thirty years ago, they were free, and I believe they were more than one day a week. Anybody help me out here?
You know, I took swim lessons too, and they were free, but that was.
Yeah.
Whole time.
And I don't know if there's been any kind of discussion about that possibility that the town offers swim lessons like they used to for residents of the town of Madison for free.
So what, what we're doing right now is offering swim lessons to participants in Madison Summer Camp for free. This fee applies only to those children that are not participating in Summer Camp. So we've been trying for three years now to get swim lessons going, and it costs money to have them certified, and it costs money to pay Heather to be present, and nothing in this life is free, but we are doing the best we can.
Okay, so just for quick, who's getting the free lessons?
People that have already paid to attend Summer Camp will get lessons.
That's part of their camp?
Yep.
Okay.
Is it still one day a week?
Uh, yes.
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 Yep.
Yep.
But is that a goal that maybe the rec committee is thinking towards?
Oh, yeah, we'd love to expand on this. I would, I think.
I mean, ultimately, it'll be up to the voters as to whether or not they're willing to pay for the staffing and those types of things.
Right. Finding people to get certified, unfortunately, right now, trying to find a class to get certified is really tricky, and then finding people to get certified is also really tricky, so.
So is the rec committee profitable at any point in time, um, predicted?
Last, well, last year, the rec budget was thirty-one thousand dollars. The revenue from Summer Camp was twenty-one thousand dollars, and then donations in the revolving trust was eight thousand. So there is a pretty good return on investment with rec, and that is without having charged sports fees. It's with charging a very low Summer Camp fee. So now there's sports fees, there'll be swim fees, and I was, when I was on the rec committee last year, and trying like heck to try to get summer swim lessons going last summer, exactly as Sophie just said, no one in the valley is certified, no one in the valley is offering them. There was one woman who put on like the Mount Washington Valley Moms Group or something last year, that she was, she ran a swim school in the valley, moved away and was moving back, and it's their interest. She said within a week she got three hundred and seventy-five direct messages. There's that much of a need for it, but it does cost. And, you know, people have definitely want, push the rec, we want, the rec wants to be self-sustaining. We want to rely less on taxpayers. We want the folks who are using the programs to be supporting the programs.
It sounds like you are.
Yes. So that's, the goal is to continue that. And again, if taxpayers, you know, wanna vote at the town meeting to, you know, give us enough of a budget line to have it more days a week and have it, you know, free, then warrant article or something, somebody come forward, you know, and represent the taxpayers and get that going.
Any other, any other questions? Marsha, you have your hand up.
I'm just, I'm curious, what is the fee to be in the rec program?
A hundred dollars a week.
A hundred dollars a week?
For Summer Camp?
Yeah.
Yes, a hundred dollars a week. Or like there was an early bird thing where if you signed up for all eight weeks, you get it for six hundred, so that would even be less, so, yeah.
Well, I, I mean, I do think it's a wonderful thing, and I'm trying to think how it could, you know, how the town could support it a little bit more and offer, I mean, swimming lessons, I, they were really important, and I said they were free, you know, my parents paid the fee for the, but it was five days a week. But, oh, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. This board's good with the fee?
Yeah, I'm fine.
I'm good with it, yes.
Do you need a motion or a vote?
I'll just certify it.
All right, well, I will make the motion that we charge a hundred and forty dollars per enrollee for swim lessons and add it to our fee schedule.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, second.
Thank you.
I'll see you guys at the beach.
Thank you.
Yep, uh, do you need a motion or a vote? All right, with that, we're gonna close the public hearing at four forty. Um, approval of minutes from May twenty-eighth.
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes as amended.
I abstained because I wasn't there.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. An abstention. Uh, approval of non-public minutes, May twenty-eighth, to May public.
Having said that I wasn't there, on that second page, motion to adjourn by twice second if I agree. So I will fix that.
Make the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I will second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Want an abstention? Can I see?
Yep.
All right, approval of the manifest, payroll thirty-two thousand seven eighty-five and nineteen cents, payroll liability is ten thousand one sixty-six and twelve cents, counts payable one hundred fifteen thousand four hundred eighty-five dollars and sixty cents, answer retirement system twenty-four thousand five hundred forty-two dollars and thirty cents, and two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the elementary school, for a total of four hundred thirty-two thousand dollars, or four hundred thirty-two thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty-one cents.
Make the motion to approve the manifest?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We're gonna shuffle the agenda a little bit, move public comment down the list, only because I have to vacate at five fifteen for a baseball game right next door. So we're gonna move directly to the cat grader discussion. So basically, we need to do grader. We've already had this conversation. Uh, there is the possibility of a special town meeting, which sounds like it will push us outside the timeframe of actually being able to lock into this grader. Um, and there is the possibility of trading in this current grader, entering into a lease agreement with an escape clause and ratifying that agreement in March at town meeting. If the town so choose that they don't wanna enter into that agreement, then we will be out of grader, and if you know the worst for the wear, we'll be paying a rental next year. Seems to be the best option in my opinion, but did I miss anything, Josh?
No, that's where we're at.
I wanna thank Joe Dame, sitting with us today, who put together a fantastic nine-page analysis of, of the graders, looking at new graders, looking at used graders, doing the cost-benefit analysis and all of this. It was fantastic information, colored photos, extremely helpful. So that's a, you know, a great resource for us to have during decision-making, so thank you, Joe. Yeah, if we don't do this now, we do lose the, we do have the potential to lose out, high risk really of losing out. The two options are to have a special meeting, special town meeting, which we'd probably again lose out on the grader if we try to put that together, or to enter into the lease with an escape clause, and again, as Adam said, hope that the taxpayers understand and are on board and, you know, get the information they need prior to town meeting next year to accept, to accept or ratify the lease.
I did the, the market survey, looked at the prices and that type of thing, and I spoke with Dave regarding the requirements and things. Yeah, I'm Joe Dame, I'm on the Madison Budget Committee, but this wasn't, I put this together, my software hasn't been through the committee yet, and just wanna make that clear. And the, the price of that machine that Milton Caterpillar bid, you know, submitted a bid, is a great price. If you look at some of the used machines, they're more expensive than a new machine that Milton Cat is offering. Plus, the advantage of the one forty grader that DPW identified is it comes with a seven-year, thirty-five-hundred-hour warranty. And I looked at the, the old grader, the one twenty G, it's a nineteen-eighty-seven model, and it has about ten to twelve thousand operating hours on it. Best estimate because the hour meter broke sometime in the past, many years ago. I, I looked at the CAT research websites, manufacturer stuff, and the expected lifetime on that machine is twelve thousand hours. That's when, you know, fifty percent of the parts fail. So we're at that point where the grader does need to be, be replaced. Again, they're, they're not inexpensive. The used machines are three fifty to over four hundred thousand dollars. So I looked at the, what the fair market value of the existing town grader was, and I think, I believe that Milton Cat offered it thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars as a trade-in to the old machine. And that's a very fair price, you know, for a machine in that condition with that many hours on it. But the issue...
I think you have, second.
Oh, sorry, the issue with CAT is these machines are in very high demand. The machine that the town was looking at from the, the voluntary deal that CAT dealer there, hasn't even been made yet. They were gonna shift their production to accommodate it. These machines sell as soon as they, you know, in advance, before they hit the dealer lots, and the used machines are gone too, and it's driving up the price. So, you know, we're at a point where we have a worn-out, broken machine, and we do have, I think it's a, it's a fair, reasonable bid, you know, bid from the CAT dealer to replace it. But Linda passed wrong copies, I believe, just a cost analysis idea.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, thank you. It's Joe.
So I think we just wanna make sure that the taxpayers know that this has been thought out. I think the corrective action is to do this, is to sign the lease and then put it before the, the taxpayers next year. The preventative action is the, you know, the long-term is using new iWork software, and Dave has now become an expert, and thank you, Dave, to better plan to replace the heavy equipment, replace all the equipment. So that's part of the reason the software was put into place. And I know it's, a lot of folks, Budget Committee wants to help, and groups wanna help and build out that plan, so we are last minute replacing a half million dollar piece of equipment.
Just to note that this piece of equipment is used year-on. It's also used for snow removal, so it just doesn't sit there all, all winter.
One, one last point in regard to that, John. The, the new grader, one of the options on it is a, is a Craig wind plow mount, and it's compatible with the town's existing plow. So we wouldn't have to buy the new snow plow for the, the new grader, you know, some of the parts are compatible with the new machine. So that helps to keep the cost down.
So it sounds like this board is okay with going forward with that option?
And do we have to discuss these terms?
We don't have terms in front of us yet, because have we put the, we don't have anything to sign tonight.
No, not at all. I, I...
We need to have a public hearing.
That was the thought, just to put it in the paper and let everybody know.
We need to decide what terms we would prefer, have the public hearing, and then we can sign the lease agreement. I would prefer, I know it's a little bit more expensive yearly, but I would prefer the seven-year option to keep the payments within side of the warranty.
And it would keep, yeah, within, yeah, the warranty period.
Adam, can I, can I raise one point? At the last year's storms, you know, they washed the roads out, that type of thing, Maggie Hassan came in and we're, the town was getting three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars reimbursed from FEMA for the emergency road repairs that have already been, you know, the town spent money to complete. When that money comes in, can some of that funding be used to, to pay down the new grader, so, you know, it's not as high a burden on the taxpayers? You know, we've already spent the money. This is a kind of a windfall reimbursement from the federal government.
Well, the idea is to use that money to reduce the tax rate, so essentially we would
Either way, yeah, yeah.
do that.
Yeah, okay.
Because it would go to the general fund.
Right. It would be in our reserve fund balance and be available to reduce the tax rate at the end of the year, once we do receive the money. That is the thought.
I know, I, I don't, I know what you're saying, Joe. I don't think you can actually use that money to buy down the payment on the...
No, but in a roundabout way, we're getting, we're still reducing the tax rate, just a matter of how we're doing it.
Yeah, how are you doing it? Okay, no, I understand.
And I don't know if there was something specific in the grant or in that, you know, the wording of us getting the money that said it must be used to repair, repair the exact damage that was done from those storms.
Yeah, the thought was that the town has already spent the money to repair the roads. This was a reimbursement, you know, after the fact.
Yeah.
So your inclination is to go with a seven-year, which is a payment of sixty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars?
Yes, it's roughly two cents on the tax rate, higher than the ten-year option, but it keeps the payments within side of the warranty timeframe, and we pay less in interest over time.
So it's an extra sixteen thousand dollars a year for the taxpayers, but again, the amount would save us in interest.
But it cuts three years off the end of the note.
Yep.
That is my personal opinion, it's how I would do it if I was financing it. The rate would probably be the same or slightly less, usually with shorter terms, they're, they're really close or a couple points.
They're the same.
The same.
Yeah. Is it that many here?
Yeah, typically buying your car would be that way. Lower percentage rate, but it seems like that's not the case here.
Yeah, I think it's the next page.
I think both the financial and the warranty coverage.
There we go.
You know, justified.
There we go. I'll find it one of these days. Yeah. What do you think?
I'm good with it, because we're looking at a sixty-seven thousand dollar payment as opposed to fifty-one thousand, but an extra three years.
Right.
Don't have a count really with me, but it's a substantial savings in...
In interest payments.
Yeah, that's why people have fifteen-year mortgages. It says, well, the thirty-year mortgage is because you're paying a fortune to interest.
That's why you get mortgages, no early payment fee.
And the, the amount that it increases doesn't hurt us a ton upfront. So, we'll have Linda get in touch with tax exempt and get seven-year lease going, and we'll schedule that public hearing.
Do you want it at your next meeting?
It's on with me.
Yeah, my next meeting.
June twenty-fifth?
Yes.
Is that ready to roll, Josh?
August, right.
Is that loaded, ready to roll when we sign the lease?
It's still being made. It hasn't even been made yet. It's scheduled to come off the assembly line in August, sometime in August.
All right.
It's better than eighteen months.
Mm-hmm.
Well, all right, we will do that. Anything else?
No.
I don't know.
Thank you.
All right. Conservation Commission to discuss tree removal invoice. I don't know, is anything actually in here on that list?
No.
No. So what was the tree removal invoice?
Twenty-seven hundred seventy dollars.
Twenty-seven hundred seventy?
Yeah.
Okay. So my understanding is the Conservation Commission has ten thousand dollars to spend this year?
Correct.
And none of that, we have found, can be used for attorney's fees for the chain-of-ponds contract? That's my understanding. That was the original concern, is that we wouldn't have enough money for that, but that money can't be used in that way anyway?
Well, I guess that's the latest opinion. We weren't aware of that at, at the time.
Okay. That is my impression, that that was advice from Cordell. So it sounds like the Conservation Commission has the money in that ten thousand dollars. If you can't use it for legal fees, you have the money to pay for the tree removal?
My understanding from the Conservation Commission at, not last meeting, because I was unable to attend, the prior meeting, was that there is a great deal of work to be done on the trails, because all of the damage that happened also happened on the trails. And there's a lot of work to be done. There isn't an estimate yet on all the trail work that needs to be done to remove those trees.
The flip side to that is my understanding is also that the guy that does your maintenance does not have time to fit it all in this year anyway.
We don't know that.
So right now he's under contract for, what, four thousand?
Four thousand, yes.
So even if he were to double his input, you're at eight thousand, and I don't see that happening. So I, I'm, if it were a private landowner, we would make them pay for it. We wouldn't take it out of the budget. If it was a private landowner's trees that were obstructing a town culvert, the, the private landowner would be responsible for removing the trees. It's, it's essentially the same situation.
Go ahead.
I, I think there's some clarification needs to happen. Is this conservation property or is this a town forest? And the, the Conservation Commission has always let the trees fall where they fall and not remove them. And I think we would have let this stay this time, except the, the concern was that the trees, as they deteriorate, would block the culvert, and blocking the culvert would threaten the road. But, I mean, I, I personally don't think that those trees would have degraded that quickly to block the culvert. And the culvert is town property. So it's a road issue if you're worried about the culvert. As Conservation Commission, we probably would have let the trees stay where they were and just cut where they've fallen across the path to open the path up and left the trees, which is what, there was a tree, two trees down there that had been down there for at least ten years that did nothing to block the culvert. Now, my other concern about the culvert is that when the debris is removed from the culvert that is causing trouble up against the screen and starting to block the water, that material is just thrown up on the banking, which then it just washes right back down. Why isn't that material removed and disposed of and not just thrown up on the banking where it goes right back down? And that, that I think is a greater risk to the culvert than were the trees which were fifty feet away from the culvert.
I think there's a whole lot of supposition here. Why don't we just pay the bill?
We've already paid it. That's, that's what I was just gonna say, is we've already paid it. So what, if they have money left at the end of the year that they need to...
Paid it on what, what line?
Uh, I think at Town Projects, just so that they weren't waiting, the vendor wasn't waiting to get paid.
That was my next suggestion, was can we just, if, if there's money left over in that ten thousand at the end of the year, can we reimburse the budget with that money? If you spend it all on maintenance, great, we get more maintenance. If you don't, can we reimburse the budget for what we've already expended?
And who, who engaged the, um...
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt your chat.
That's okay.
Um, who engaged the maintenance work?
That would be us.
So the, the...
Linda, yeah.
Okay. So the Conservation Commission didn't engage the work to be done?
Well...
Go ahead, Josh.
So the first thing I did was, because we started to lose the culvert during that storm, and all those trees came down. And as you know, there was all kinds of people out there working, co-op. I actually called Tim Nolan, who's the town forester, and to ask to get a recommendation on him, what we should do, what he thought we should, how we should take care of this. And he said, as we, we all knew that we needed to remove those trees out of the water, because they were gonna block the culvert, which they had already started to block the culvert. We started, like I said, we started to lose it. We put two truckloads of riprap around that culvert, so we wouldn't lose it during that particular storm. And, um, and he recommended that, you know, we needed to remove them to save the culvert. And so I, I guess I engaged him, the town forester, to get his opinion on what we should do, and, and we don't have the capabilities to remove those trees. And he'd had a crew that was actually coming in in the near future, and I asked him to come to that meeting, and he did come to the meeting when we decided, when we talked about, there was that one tree on the one side of the road and the, the seven trees on the other side of the culvert. And the, the one tree, the pine tree that was getting ready to fall down, certainly the highway department took the, the hit on that. That was six thousand dollars just to remove that one tree, because we had to call in a grain to remove it. But the other ones, like, as I said, you know, there are, it's, I don't know, is it conservation land or is it town, you know, town forest? I, I don't know who's responsible for it. I, I don't, but like I told you last meeting, that, that if it was private property, we would go after that, you know, that private landowner to... Is it our property? Yes? I, I don't know. You know, what, who's in charge of that property?
I interrupted you, John.
If the bill's been paid, they got their ten thousand dollars, am I correct?
They just don't know how much that, that ten thousand they're gonna need.
For what?
To do all the maintenance to the forests and all the conservation land from the same storms.
Is that gonna be done, is that gonna be done this year?
They're looking to have it done this year.
It's underway. It's underway.
They wanted to open up the trails and clear our, the map, with the maps we have posted, all those trails have damaged, so we're hoping to get those, those done.
So we were talking twenty-something hundred dollars?
Twenty-seven seventy.
Twenty-seven.
And I, I still can tell...
I'm not gonna get any hungry over this.
That the damage, that the culvert was filling up because of all the debris that was sitting on the banking that had been collecting there for a long time, and when all that rain came, washed all that, and you can't tell me that those brand, those living trees that fell down were deteriorating fast enough to block that culvert.
And so this is proactive maintenance to prevent future culvert damage?
I'm fine.
I mean, I don't, I don't...
You authorized the work. And Josh authorized the work, that was it? That tells me the answer.
I think Adam made a point, and I'll recommend at the next meeting that we'll cover the appropriation if we have funds at the end of the year.
I appreciate it. I mean, if you don't have anything left at the end of the year, that means you got a lot of maintenance done, and we're all better off for it anyway, so...
Okay.
We can, we can give you whatever we have left.
That would be great. Otherwise, then...
If it's half or whatever, but I just...
It's not the end of the world, if not, but it would be great if we could.
Okay.
I, I like that solution, but I agree with Marsha. The debris is... The debris is taken out and it's just left on, on the edge of the, the, uh, stream, the inlet. And snow plows end up putting it back in and it just, a lot of it just ends up back in. So I would like to see that debris, that organic material either move deeper into the woods, so it's not so vulnerable.
We will take a look. Alright.
I have, I have pictures if you, if I have my own to see them.
Anything else on that?
I'm done.
Sure, done. Alright. Well, I skipped over it, but I have about ten minutes. Is there anybody here that wanted to speak during public comment? Mr. Kirby?
Dave Kirby, uh, over on Heritage Road. I was out, uh, driving Lead Mine Road recently and I believe I was speaking to the selectman probably two years ago about storage of personal firewood on town property down in the forest. And it looks like that is back again stored on town property. So I'm hoping that the selectman can, looking to see what's going on with that because it was a problem a couple of years ago and it looks like it's back again. So I really think that needs to be looked at.
Okay, can you send somebody else to take a look?
May I address that?
You can address it to me, don't address him.
Why do you think that?
Donna.
I would like to know why he thinks that.
He thinks it and we'll look into it. If he's wrong, he's wrong. If he's right, we'll deal with it.
Oh. Uh, my question is, um, to Josh, um, DPW. At the, um, Lead Mine Road at the utility line. Um, I think the grader got stuck, um, when they were brading the road. And the ditch is, looks like it's four feet deep when they, they got stuck. I'm wondering if they're waiting for that to dry up for them to fix it because, uh, the co-op uses that, uh, trail. And there's just no way they could use it if it's left the way it is. I don't know if he knows what I'm talking about.
Yeah, no, I know exactly what you're saying.
I, do, does he plan on fixing it?
I will find out. And I will take a look, I will take a look myself and I will find out from Josh what the situation is and we will go from there. I don't want to engage in back and forth conversation between the public and the park units in a meeting session. But we will look into it.
Can't ask him now? I don't understand the, the controversy.
Because it engages a back and forth between you and him and I will do that in a public session. Are you gonna fix it, Josh? If you can?
Yeah.
There we go. Alright, any other public comment?
Yes.
Can I approach?
I suppose.
So good afternoon, Kathy Cozel, Seven Lakeview Drive. Joy, congratulations on your, uh, win as a board member. Um, this regards to short-term rentals. And I'm not sure if the, um, public is aware, but there were several short-term rental cases being heard by the ZBA. And the decision was made to put a six-month hold on a chunk of them to see how things progress legally going forward. Um, um, since then, um, I'd like to present to the board three very specific cases that have not gotten to the ZBA stage. Two of which were clearly properties that were not even constructed when our amended zoning ordinance went into effect. And they have received no communication from the town. So just wanted to offer, um, the supporting documentation on those two properties to see if the, uh, selectmen, um, with their consideration might wanna move these forward. Um, two of them, the tax card even shows that in late December of twenty twenty-two, so eight months after the ordinance went into effect, those lots were still being, um, taxed as vacant lots. So there's obviously no home there. They were not renting them um, anywhere near when the, um, ordinance went into effect, substantially later. Um, and the third property, um, had, is an older property, but there was absolutely no history or indication of public record that that property had been rented prior to um, October of twenty twenty-three. So a good year and a half after the, um, ordinance went into effect. So if I could submit these three properties, may I approach?
Yeah, good.
Don't know who to give these to or to, just take a look at them and see if they're worthy of forwarding to whether it go to Bob Boyd or whether it's something that you would, um, be
What is the official process?
I'm sorry. Don't, I'm all set.
What is the, our official process for, you know, taking in information about rentals and, you know, what is the town process, for example, start now?
This would go to, uh, this would go to Bob to review. And he would send, he would authorize a letter that, we would authorize a letter that he would sign. Am I correct on that, Linda?
Um, yes. It's been a while since we've sent anything out. Waiting, you know, we've kinda, you, you weren't moving forward knowing that all those cases were still at the ZBA. We were kinda hoping that one of those would get to the court who would make the black and white decision and then move forward from there whether or not people are allowed or not allowed them. So we haven't been sending anything out. In the past, we'd send out two letters, one letter? It was two letters, then a cease and desist, then it went to one letter and a cease and desist. But like I said, we haven't sent anything out recently.
These people have received no information at all?
The, the two of them have not. The one on Pokipines did receive a single letter. Um, their response to the town is attached. And they said that they were already renting because they had a two hundred dollar cash deposit from someone. And at that point, that property was still vacant land. They hadn't even broken ground. So I don't know how that qualifies as a intent to rent when the house was not even started at that point. So that's basically the only evidence that they provided in, um, their effort to say that they were already renting prior to the ordinance change from the March of twenty twenty-two town vote. The other two houses clearly were not built. They had, they had no building permit. The, the certificate of completion wasn't until twenty twenty-three. So again, you know, at least a year and a half or so after the, um, the ordinance went into effect.
Unfortunately, I think at this point, we're, we need to wait until we get word from the court to the validity of our zoning before we start going after anybody else because we're, we're not doing any good if we go after another rental just to have the court tell us that our zoning isn't what we think it is. And I don't wanna waste any more of Bob's time chasing after, in the ZBA, especially with them on the six-month hold. Chasing after short-term rentals when we don't know where the court stands. And we have cases in limbo with the court. And I think we just need to wait until we get an answer from, from the aftercourt before we move forward with anything else. Otherwise, we're wasting money.
I would agree.
Alright, we should move faster?
Yeah, I mean, I thought that getting them kinda in the pipeline, because the, it takes six months for us to send two or three letters out by the time they get the letter and, and respond. So at least they'd be in the pipeline, ready to move forward.
We send them the, the letter and they appeal to the ZBA and then notices go out and then find out that the court doesn't agree with us and then we have to retract the letters and it I just don't think it's a good idea to do anything until we get a court decision.
It just seems pretty clear that the ones that weren't even built.
Yes, but if the court doesn't agree that our ordinance is what we think it is, then we're still wrong for everybody. So, and we need that decision.
Okay, is there any, any, um, indication with the ones that are in process, when that's gonna start happening?
Not with a new judge in place. It's, uh, things are hectic in the aftercourt system right now.
And we really, to underscore it, Adam just said, we need to make sure that Duxnerell, the ordinance holds water because, to mix plenty of metaphors, because the courts have been ruling in favor of the rental owners.
Hmm, I would disagree with that. The, the Conway case, um, was really faced, but I don't wanna get into discussion about that because it doesn't, doesn't solve anything, but you know, Conway did not really rule on what our ordinance says. And they made it very clear in their, um, findings that it only applied specifically to Conway. And the phrase of living as a household, that's really what that whole case was driven by, was the way that that language was used. Our, that, that phrase is not even in the, um, Madison ordinance. So it's a very, it's a very different case.
It isn't that different. I mean, I read a lot of the, I read the court documentation. I read, you know, the Conway ordinances. And it's, in, in my personal opinion and comfort level, it's not different enough to give us the confidence to charge ahead.
The vote, the voters did say that they wanted to eliminate transient occupancy in a dwelling unit in our town. And we didn't come up with that, that, no, I should say, the, the residents didn't come up with that warrant article. It was the planning board. So that article was put forth before the town and it was voted on and approved. That's what the town voters.
Every, so many voters who I've spoken to since that went through a couple of years ago have said, I didn't know that's what I was voting for. So, again, I'm just, I wanna make sure we are
I don't want it to be argumentative.
Legal, solid ground before we do anything further. Not anything further, but just before we dive into expensive court battles only to experience what other towns have been feeling.
But John, did you have a question?
I have a question actually for Mr. Dempster.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll leave it at that.
I don't wanna get into a long-winded discussion over this whole matter because it's gonna be a long-winded discussion when we get to court. But Bill, you had, you've seen some results based on our conversation of people leaving the system, so to speak. Could you give me a little background on that?
Um, I guess I would ask the chair if I could speak, but.
I'm now the chair.
Yeah, hi, I'm Bill Dempster. Um, I'm speaking as, as a resident, not as a member of the zoning board, um, so to make that clear. Um, there, there have been, um, a drop in the number of short-term rentals in town. Um, the number of short-term rentals after, and this is looking at the March of twenty twenty-two, we started off with about sixty, we're now down to thirty-eight. That's either through people selling their properties and the new homeowners are not putting it up for a short-term rental. You have short-term rental people, there's a couple of cases where they're now renting one-term rental and the clock is ticking on abandonment. And there are people that are, again, there's some, because of the ZBA ruling, they're selling their properties outright. There are people that aren't even sticking around in town. And a lot of them that I'm seeing are members of the Mount Washington Valley Responsible Runners Group. So there are people, there are people leaving. Give you an example, in twenty twenty-two, after March twenty twenty-two, there were thirty-eight new short-term rentals. In twenty twenty-three, it's nineteen, and twenty twenty-four, it's six. So it's going down.
I think part of that too is I've seen the hubbub on Facebook and all that of renters, especially in Conway, saying I'm having trouble renting out my place, who else? And people are not as interested in renting short-term rentals right now for whatever their reasons. So I think there's also a natural decline in the need for it, which is another motivating factor, um, for folks not getting into the business or for selling the properties.
For whatever reason, I didn't make any of those decisions. All I did was look at, they were selling it, didn't turn into a short-term rental, but new ones were coming in. So I went to a residential home, um, and we'll be good at that.
Yep, there are multiple factors. I think it's.
I can tell you that I've been watching Albany and the other towns around us, and we have the smallest growth rate of any of the towns around. Conway's exploding, Albany has, has, has exploded, Bartless exploded, those areas, it's grown significantly compared to what's happened in Madison. So I think the word's getting out.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah.
Alright, um. We're gonna be, uh, looking at lean, uh, can you see all, is Mike here?
No, he's got that, um, he's taking that class, that EMT class.
This is just a review of what is available.
Exactly. And I, mostly to be proactive on any of these ones that, um, we'd wanna go and check to see if there would be a reason why if it comes to it in August, if you consider, if it's a, um, not a vacant piece, if you would take it or not take it, there could be a reason why you don't wanna take it. Those are two reasons why you're allowed to use.
Well, we're gonna, as we get closer to the, to the lean date, a lot of these get paid.
They do. There's a couple of new ones, I think, on the list.
But effectively, this is a list of folks that have not paid their property taxes in full.
It'll be three years in August and then that's the point where the selectmen have the option to, to take it.
Stuff that's in the beige print is land only. We have in the past been, I hate to say the word aggressive, but we, we will generally take land. If there's, uh, dwelling on it and someone's dwelling in it, we take a second look at it. I guess we can say we've never put anybody out on the street in the twenty-some odd years that I've been here. But have, who might be at the next?
I don't know when his class ends. I'm not sure. I, I mean, this won't be till, it's like August twenty-thirdish, twenty-first or somewhere right there, this'll happen. So, um, I think it's right now informational maybe and about
Yeah.
Like, maybe in two more meetings, we can do this again and see if we should direct Bob Boyd to go look at anything.
Yeah, see if we wanna take it or not. His, uh, I don't know the one, but. There's a property in, actually, I'm sure, oh, we've taken it already. Right across from the transfer station, but not the one everybody thinks of, the trailer. The trailer that's there is on one-tenth of Anika.
Oh, the one behind, the one?
Right next to the one that's getting cleaned up.
I think it's a different piece.
It is a different piece. And the guy that's cleaning up, the one that was really bad, has interest in that. Does it would give him more furniture. So it might be something to bring up at a future meeting. It's, I don't know if you're, just before you get to the transfer station, you're right.
On the right.
There's a, yeah, there's a trailer there that's older than me. And, uh, it looks, it looks terrible. And he wants, he has interest and he's all clean it up.
Generally, when somebody like that comes to us, we offer them the property owner information to the neighbor.
But we are, oh, to the neighbor, you mean?
Well, yeah.
Right, okay, I get what you mean, dear butter.
Right.
And he's in the butter.
Yeah, so then they can kinda hash it out, you know, they can approach, he could approach this neighbor who owns that parcel that the.
But he's, he's in the impression that we own it.
I think there's two, I think there's the piece that we just recently.
The access piece.
Right, there's the piece from the power, that's on the power, uh, the power. And then there is another one that that trailer's on. And then there's the piece that is directly across that just got cleaned up.
Yeah.
So I would generally put those two homeowners or property owners together to deal with if you wanna buy your neighbor or not. Because that trailer is definitely not on our property.
That's not on our property?
No. Definitely not.
Okay.
Have a map, but.
I'll, I'll, I'll get a map and take a look at it. Just, I'd just like to get that trailer out of there, just as, yeah. Yes, alright. Okay.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we don't own that.
We don't own?
We own the one further down the street, right, when you come into Boulder Road, that the second house, there's, um, his first name's Bob. And then the next, there's that old, there's a trailer on that next that says, no, yeah, that we own.
Where the trailer is?
Yes, not near the one that, not near the power lines or that, it's on the other, it's closer to one thirteen than it is to the transfer station.
Okay. I, I gotta take a look.
It was, um, Patton, Mr. Patton owned it. He passed away.
Not the one that's got shingles on the side, roofing shingles on the side?
It's, um.
There's a map right behind you, but it's probably too small to really see.
When you come, when you come into Boulder Road, Mr. Daigle's right in the corner with the log home, right on the other side of him.
Oh, okay.
That old trailer, that the town owns.
That's not the trailer I'm talking about.
Okay, then yes, then we don't own the one you're talking about.
Okay. Alright, uh. Under all business, uh, rec square fees?
We were gonna come up with an idea of how to compensate for the fees that were coming out of the
The two point nine percent, yeah.
Okay. And.
Is that the only charge? Because sometimes these things have a percentage and then a ticket charge.
Yeah, I'm not. I'm not sure how they come up with the fee.
There is, I can print it up for you guys, there is a two-point-nine or two-point-something percent and then like a thirty-cent transaction fee.
Sure, exactly.
It's two-point-nine, then it's approximately, and then thirty cents is, I know that's that.
So you ran it.
So that's a report that I've done.
This chart is show six thousand dollars in sales, am I reading this right?
This is the, after the fees. So I have, I can actually pull up my spreadsheet and show you or print out more of it. This view of it was specifically so Jordan would know what was a donation and would go into the rec revolving fund after fees, and then what was fees and revenue that would go into the general fund after fees were taken out, after the square fees. So this is the total, these are the deposits that Jordan sees day by day, you can see the, each day. These were the deposits that were put into the account that was set up to receive the funds. And then this is for Jordan to say, okay, the four dollars and fifty-five cents on May twenty-third is a donation post-square fees, and that would go into the rec revolving fund. That was my five dollars, because I was testing square. You're welcome, rec, for four dollars and fifty-five cents. So yeah, that's this view, and I do have an extension of this that does show the full fees for each transaction and all that. So I can get that to the board for the next meeting. And then the second page was for rec's benefit, so they could see the participant names, so what camper paid for how much, and then how much did they pay, so. So this just lists the campers on the left, and then what they purchased. So Heather knows, okay, they signed up for all eight weeks, they have paid for all eight weeks and.
So I guess part of Jordan's request was, I guess, well, more like this for the heading, so that the donation and what the fee was of it that way. So add a couple of lines in here.
Yeah.
Columns in there, and then if there could be something on here that specifically says donations at, you know, transferred to.
Yeah.
You know, she just wants it spelled out so that there's no.
Yeah, I can change donations to say, you know.
Reprevolving fund transfer or something like, yeah, that'd be great, then she.
That makes sense, no questions.
Right, exactly.
Yep.
But other than that, I guess it would just, that would satisfy Jordan, and I still think we gotta come up with some way to cover those fees.
Yeah.
And that might entail another public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, because when we pay our car registration online, there's a, by the way, if you're paying it this way, there's.
Convenience.
So I don't know if that's, I'll have to look into square to see if they let us charge a convenience fee to pay their fee.
Right.
So.
So maybe we can talk about it next time again, see what come, what you can find.
Yeah.
About how to, how to those.
It was within twenty-four hours of that square site going up, sixty-three hundred dollars, like six thousand dollars of summer camp was paid within twenty-four hours.
It's been awesome.
Yeah, which also meant far less traffic and paperwork and all of that from Linda and Kate.
Yeah.
And now we're up over ten thousand dollars, as of the other day, of folks who have paid for summer camp, so.
How many people?
There's a total of almost sixty people have signed up, but the cap is forty a day. So some only sign up for one week, some, and we have people who were get, who wanted all eight weeks, who got in for some weeks and not others, and now there's a waiting list and. Yeah, I mean, at some point now that we've kind of closed out round one of payments, because they were due a couple of weeks, ten, eleven days ago, the next step is, okay, you didn't pay, down the waiting list. You know, which is hard.
And I've already made phone calls on that waiting list, so, yeah, it's been awesome.
Yeah.
Awesome, awesome.
Yeah.
We already need more counselors next year. It's getting bigger.
It's fantastic.
Crazy, yeah.
And it speaks a lot to you as director, right, that it went from, I wanna say like twenty-ish kids a day, the first, when you weren't here. The next it jumped up to creeping up on that forty, well, thirty-five, whatever it was a day with three counselors. Now we have four counselors plus you, and we have sixty kids signing up.
Yeah.
And now we have a counselor and training program, where four kids going into eighth grade are volunteering their services as counselors in training. So it's, it's amazing, amazing what has happened, and thank you to you.
And now you have swimming lessons.
And now you have swimming lessons, there's, yeah, it's amazing what you have done with the support of the committee. Like, it's phenomenal what you've accomplished in a very short period of time, so.
As a part-timer.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, select McJoy, you got anything today?
I do not.
I don't have anything. Adam gone? Linda, what do you got tonight?
Nothing.
Nothing? We got a six o'clock meeting, you know it.
Yes.
Josh?
Roll off, try to go as quick as possible. So we ditched Tasker and Allard Hill have been ditched. We've got our dump bodies all ready to go for the summertime, because we changed them all for the different seasons. All the grass has been mowed. So you had some problems with the truck twelve, we had to fix the D S brake valve. We prayed the swim raft and put swim raft in it before the lake. We did seven loads of trash in the last two weeks. Cleaned all the beaches times four, we clean them twice, try to clean them twice a week. include dragging the sand, leveling them out, sharpened all the lawnmower blades, fixed the baseball storage shed, apparently that got ruined last week.
What, what happened?
Yeah, I don't know. The T-ball, one of the T-ball coaches didn't have her key.
Oh.
And there was a T-ball game.
Yep.
Well, it's all that mystery is fixed.
So they, well. Yeah. It's replaced, but yes, yeah, I don't know who, I don't know who replaced it.
We did.
You did, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um, we took, we put, took all the oil out of the transfer station.
I saw that, thank you.
Um, and put it in our, our.
You have any more space left?
Yep, we do, so we, about, uh, what, we have a whole, one whole tank that's empty and probably a quarter of another ones.
We've taken in about thirty gallons this week.
Yeah.
People must be changing their earth.
It'll be full by the end of the year, for sure, before winter starts.
We've got a new tank coming?
We have it, we have the new tank, we just gotta install it, and that'll be up to, you know, I thought the whole purpose of getting the new tank was, because we, the other one was junk, or it's not, it's not double-walled. Right. So, you know, we talked about keeping that there as a spare, but I, I don't really like that idea, I kinda wanna.
I think if we have enough capacity down here, one's fine. I mean, we get to three-quarters, we start making, start letting Dave know, we get to three-quarters. But we took in five-gallon bucket of oil this week. But that's safe, four bucks a gallon.
Yep. Yeah, so when we get time, when we get a chance, we'll get that other, that one out, out of there and get the new one in.
Yeah.
We had to put a new street sign up and stop sign on Nicomia Drive that got taken down at some point this winter. Put delineators up on Allard Hill for all the culverts that we cleaned out, sharpened all the chainsaw blades and the weed whackers. Weed whacked and cleaned the bridge and the trail leading from the school to the ball field. It's all cleaned up, ready to go. We're working on fixing sign at transfer station, Dave put in the post, posts today, so by the end of the week, the sign will be back packed. We started ditching on Moody Hill today, we put it about a thousand feet. We scheduled Mark Ford's coming in to mow the transfer station within the week. And he'll do it again in the fall, the cap. We had to put a new cutting edge on the excavator, and Moody Hills dig saved for the paving, they're gonna grind on the night. Pike is coming in to grind the pavement on the nineteenth and plan to be paved right around the first of July.
More like hill?
We've contacted FEMA, the D S a few times, we're waiting for our permit. Mike, three times this week, he's been in contact with them. He was gonna call Mark McConkey tonight to see if we could rattle their cage to get our permit, so we can start.
What is, a permit from D S, Department of Environmental Services?
Yeah, for the, for the, put it in the culvert. It's an emergency. So what it is, so we can put the thing back, you have a permit, it's just a, for emergency repair, and then I, we have thirty days to actually get the permit. Once we get the emergency authorization to go, go ahead.
Why is it D S?
Because it's a lot of water.
As soon as you put a piece of equipment in water, it starts the whole process.
Okay.
Yeah, root process.
All right.
So the grader was repaired today, yesterday, and so it's running now. But when the mechanic was here, he let us know, and we haven't got the bill yet, so I don't know how much it's gonna end up costing, but we're losing, one of our engine oil coolers on it is leaking, we pulled the line that had antifreeze, it was milky white, meaning that there's antifreeze getting into the oil, mixing with the oil, and that could be a number of things. Could be a cracked head, it could be a cracked line, so.
I don't think we wanna push that.
No, we don't, and that's kinda what the position we're in right now, like, we don't really wanna use it, because what's gonna break next?
Right.
Right, we wanna get it to the point of, have your trade-in.
Yeah, exactly, yeah. So we're being very ginger, we're not, we're gonna use it sparingly for the next couple of months.
Okay.
We have to do some stuff, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, there's some stuff's gonna get done.
Yeah.
Can I add in the suggestion, next Monday morning, you're gonna be closed in the end of Moody Hill Road?
Yes, so yeah, we put notices out, everybody, so Monday at nine o'clock, we have to shut down the road for four or five hours to replace that culvert at the very bottom of Moody Hill. We just don't have enough room.
So at the intersection with 113?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll have the message board put up.
Hopefully. And to send out letters to all the residents.
Forty-six letters, actually.
Yeah.
I just want all the way up and over, yeah, so just to make sure.
We're gonna go as quick as possible, we got everything, but we wanted to, you know, everybody kinda that has to go to work, go to work, the school buses and everything, so we'll, actually, at nine o'clock, we're gonna just go like hell to try to get it done as quickly.
You only got one to do?
No, we have five to do, but that's the only one we need to close the road for.
And the school and Eldred's Transportation are aware of the, of the whole thing, it's not gonna impact anything, but they're not gonna get blindsided by saying, hey, somebody close the road.
Yes, I would recommend waiting until nine fifteen, because the school, final moments for drop-off are nine oh seven.
Okay.
So that'll get whoever needs to drop the kids off and then get wherever they need to go, if they need to go back home or whatever, just that cushion to give people the chance to get where they need to go after dropping kids off.
All right. Dave, you got anything tonight?
I, the roll-off got pushed back to the beginning of July, apparently, and we're in the same boat as the grader, so it's like just babying it, here's your trade-in, you know, so we're, we're taking it really easy on the roll-off. I had been in contact with Joe Day, and I understand the interest of getting C I P set up for equipment. And we, he did attempt to meet with me last week, and we were just so busy, I just was not able to do anything. I have to get with Josh and try to work out a time that we can sit down and, and I can show him what I have and I works and, and how that shows the age and use of equipment and the cost, so.
You, you've worked at the system for almost a year now, right, you were in training last August?
A little more than a year, yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah, so, do you feel confident that it's a good system and will be able to use it to get good information to make, to make these decisions?
I do, I mean, we're, we're following the cost of maintenance on the fleet, mostly in the DPW side. Not as much on the fire department, the police department. I am getting invoices on the cruisers now for oil changes and that kind of thing that I've been entering, but.
Have you gone retroactive, like back a couple of years, so we can have?
I did, when I started, I only went retroactive on fuel usage.
Okay.
I backed it up to January, but I, I probably could with, with what Linda was doing, I, I probably could go retroactive, but I think I just decided, let's just start from here, and we'll, you know, we didn't have a full year last year, but this year we will.
Yeah.
So. But I think that it's gonna be useful information for the A B C and our select, the select board here to come up with a program for renewing this equipment. It's a big guideline anyway, so.
Thank you for being the point person on that, new software, getting it up and running.
But I will, I'll get with Josh and try to get something set up with, with Joe that we can sit down for a couple hours and, and go over that.
Thank you.
But we're, we get busy right now.
Yeah.
That's all right.
All right. I'm rushing department heads right now. What do we got, rec?
Uh, summer camp is just under two weeks away. It's crazy, it came fast, um, so we are getting ready for that. The only things, um, you all just kinda reminded me, um, with, uh, let's see, I didn't know if there was any, um, any more porta-potties coming to the field.
How many are there now?
There's two there now?
There's one.
Oh, there's, there should be another one coming, yeah, because there's gonna be two, and then we'll have a third for August.
Okay, awesome.
But I'll find out when it was supposed to be, I wanna say it could be like this Friday, because I was thinking when school got out, that I'd go over there, but let me.
Okay, cool, yeah. Perfect. I figured, I just wanted to, I was there the other day, I'm like, I shouldn't ask them about that. And then the water bubbler, um, we'll need that.
Do you know where the tank?
Yeah, do you know where, where is it?
No idea.
Oh, okay. Um, but.
I think we brought it back to the lower garage.
It, it is, it's a lower garage, but I'm wondering if we can just get another one for you guys to keep instead of constantly, if we do use that one at the lower garage and.
Or get it back from. Sure.
But it's through the, the water supplier, right?
Yeah, W D Mason.
Okay.
And for the winter months, we can store it, can't be left in the cold.
Okay.
Don't you have it put up in the break room that we don't use in the summertime?
Actually, we do, we do have one upstairs and.
Well, we can figure it out.
Okay, you guys just made me think of it, so those two things.
And I just ordered water today, so we, I got like fourteen, fourteen jugs, so we'll have some around.
Awesome, okay. Cool. Nice. Just getting ready, just thinking of stuff like that, just to get ahead, um.
You had asked about the raft, and you guys said the raft went in at the beach, the raft, perfect, thank you.
I just wanna add on to the raft, and Josh and, and Justin and Dylan were down there helping, but there was about a day and a half of repairing it before it could go back in.
What was wrong with it?
Well, last year it broke off the moor, and when it came into shore, the ladders are fixed, and they are lower than the pontoons are, and it kinda ripped the deck up a little bit, but. Anyway, when we took it off, the mooring chain was on the bottom. There was half a dozen teenagers there, they were playing around, and, and I was waiting for these guys to come over, and I got the raft down to the shore, and they came right over to ask, I said, can we help you out? And they said, yeah, you know, we wanna go out there and find that mooring chain for me. Josh had to go get a couple.
I went to Dollar General, bought two pairs of goggles.
So, two of these boys that were there, Cabot and Trey, I think Trey is the evil scout doing the thing out here at Atkinson.
Oh, nice.
Nice.
Um, but they went out there and pulled the chain up, and then I think one of the buoys floated the raft out, I was out there at a boom. And they hooked it up underneath and helped me put the ladders on, and they were just
Oh, great.
light and respectful and, and.
And cold.
Playing on the raft.
That's the first thing I thought of.
Did you let know the DPW was hiring part-time workers?
Hey, oh, your summer help.
Yeah, that's awesome.
So, one of, I think Cabot said that he, he used to work on the, the, the boat launch there, doing the.
Oh, the tank.
Yeah.
So does the mooring chain just go in the water, or do we have buoys that we try it up to?
Well, last, last year when we took it out, it, the system we had, it, we, we dropped it. And so we knew that we were gonna have to go swimming, and I. And so we knew that we were gonna have to go swimming, and I was just like, okay, I'm gonna have to go home and get some shorts. And, uh, but they came right over and they said, you know, we can help, and I said, yeah, you absolutely can help.
That's awesome.
And they were, they were really, really helpful, so, yeah, it was nice to see, really.
That's good.
Cool.
Thank you for sharing that.
That's awesome.
Anything else?
Uh, Mike, um, I've talked to Mike about having a tent up here, um, again, for shade, shelter, all that for the summer camp kids. Cause again, we've talked about it before, the gym is not for us to use this summer, yeah, no, we're very sad, but they are updating their AC unit, which will be great for next summer. Um, so anyway, Mike's offered to help with that, uh, put a tent up in the backfield for the kids. What else? Porta potties. And just a reminder to the town that we will be at the beach on Mondays and Wednesdays. Um, I do have a couple camp counselors, I think.
I was just gonna say, those counselors I heard didn't have stickers.
Yes, they don't, they're not, yes.
I'll get, I'll talk about that.
Yeah, so I have camp counselors that will be coming, some of them to the beach after we are already there, so they won't be able to ride the bus with us. Cause they're teaching in the morning and meeting us there, so some of them won't have beach passes, right?
They're not residents, so they don't have.
So that was a concern, but we have talked to them and let them know, so.
So.
Yeah.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Um, they're technically hired as employees.
Yes.
So we actually put in the benefit package two years ago, maybe a little more, that town employees can, um, use. The beach and the boat launch, um, as with, as a resident, so. There won't be any issue there, cause it's already technically allowed, I think to make it a little better, I think what we could do is issue a. Regular permit for them and for anybody else that wants one, that's employees. And just write on it, employee or EMP, that way they can have the sticker, we're not having to chase issuing the ticket and then getting the phone call and having to tear it up, so. Might just be a little proactive to issue that out, so.
That would be great.
Yeah, great, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Uh, should you go ahead?
Yes, last year, and I don't remember when, Green Mountain Conservation came to, came to Madison Conservation, made a presentation about a. A comprehensive survey they had done of all the culverts in all the watershed towns, but they was talking specifically about the Madison culverts. And they had applied, they gave, um, Selectmen Memorial a great big spreadsheet about all the culverts, the condition of the culverts. And I think the replacement, you know, suggested replacement schedule for the culverts. And they had applied for a huge grant from the state, I don't know if it was state or federal, that a lot of money would be coming to do that work. And I think there was some follow-up that needed to happen on the part of the Madison Selectmen to, um, express that interest or. And I don't know where that all stands now.
I think we did, that brings a bell to me.
It doesn't, or it does?
It does.
Yeah, so just wanted to remind you about that, that you might wanna contact Green Mountain Conservation and see where that grant stands. Because you might be able to help pay for some of this culvert work that needs to be done.
I'm gonna check on that one.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, signature items.
Yes.
So, what is the, hi.
Hey, Steve.
Yeah. Um, what are, are we selling, are we using the property?
So we, we took that piece for taxes.
Okay.
From that person.
Oh.
Um, last year.
Okay.
And he redeemed it with the proper, um, uh, uh, fees and interest and all that kinda stuff to be able to buy it back.
Oh, okay.
And you can do that for, I don't know, as though there's a limit in how long you can do that, right?
Okay.
Yeah, to satisfy everything.
So we're just returning the deed to?
Basically, yeah.
Okay, cool.
It's taken by tax laws, so. That's, yeah, just, that's an intent cut for a cut that wasn't finished for culverts, they had an intent from, that ended in March, they asked for an extension, but they still need to cut, so they've asked for a new one for this year.
Eleventh?
Yes. That one underneath that you've got there, Joy, um, every five years, we get into this agreement with North Conway Water. It's not, we're not bound by anything, but it helps them with their numbers to be able to get financial assistance and things like that, by knowing that there's enough people who could potentially use the. Facility from different towns and things.
So do we ship septic over, or is it?
We don't, no.
But it's just, we would be allowed to?
We could, right, exactly, and we, I think we'd be allowed to anyway.
Yeah, I think private contractors that pump here, dump there.
Right, and I think that just assists in the whole process of having a, having an agreement helps them get grant money and things like that.
Right. Yeah.
And understand how many.
The firework thing here has Adam's, place for Adam's signature.
Oh, right. That's okay, you wanna sign it across his name?
I can draw, I can draw a line to it.
Yeah, we can, I'll fill in your name, I mean, it just needs a Selectman signature, and we just assumed it would be Adam, I think we funded it there.
They don't really care, as long as they get the money. It's not Atlas Fireworks, anyway?
Uh, I think they just changed their name, I think it's the same company, but they changed their name.
So this is for the Old Home Week?
Yeah, that's the deposit.
So how much do we have on my account?
I wanna say in the, the line of the budget, we had six thousand dollars to pay for fireworks, and I think the Old Home Week will make up the difference over the six thousand. And this one, last one here, is, um, it's an abatement for a yield tax. When the homo, when the yield tax information was given to us. There was no information given to say how to, um, how the, how the cut was assessed, cause you get ratings on it. Nothing was given, so I did it at a hundred percent. After she, the bill was sent out, she brought me the information that would show that it really shouldn't have been that, so. I made up an abatement for the difference of about five hundred and eighty-eight dollars that it's still very fair, and I. Very.
Well, we got, we don't have time for non-public, yes, Josh?
Can I, I don't, can I have a meeting at six?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we might be able to squeeze it in.
Can I, can you, can I squeeze in my non-public before I start?
Nobody from the school board's seen it. So we just need to, um. Make a most.
It's just, just that one, no, we have two.
We have two non-publics, yes.
Yeah, we'll go upstairs and do it, it'll probably take us ten minutes, they can.
We can do it right here if you want.
Uh, it would be a lot easier just to go upstairs, cause people might be drifting in.
Okay.
I don't know how this is gonna go. I make a motion, we go into non-public session on RSA ninety-one dash A semicolon three two, the hiring of any person of public employee. And non-public session on RSA ninety-one A three. Two A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her. Unless the employee affected one has a right to a public meeting, two, requests that a meeting be opened, in which case the request shall be granted. Go, go.
Uh, second your motion, and Joy Gray says yes.
Go.